Call a meeting order and call Council Brown to lead us in that city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the love and justice of our government.
Call Row.
Council Brown.
Here.
Council Jennings.
Here.
Council Walton.
Council Watson.
Here.
Council Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a forum to do business.
What's the order we ask a minister to lead us on invocation and I call Reverend Timms.
It is about the return of God in our Father. We come now in the name of Jesus thanking you for such a wonderful and blessing of a day. We thank you, God, for this city. We pray your blessing upon it. We praise you, Lord God, and honor you for all that you have done and what you intend to do for this great city. And we also pray for the mayor, the city councilman, every department head, every employee. We pray, Lord God, your grace and mercy upon every member of this community as well as visitors. And we ask, Lord God, that this meeting will go according to your love, your plan, and your design. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend Timms, you're welcome to stay or if you've got someplace to go, I understand. All right. First item is approval of the March 22 regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve March 22 regular minute meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Barton, a second by Council Brown to approve the regular meeting minutes for March 22, 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Jennings.
Yes.
Council Watson.
Yes.
Council Barton.
Yes.
The motion is approved and we are approving the regular meeting minutes as presented.
Next item is a public hearing. Before I start the public hearing, I'm going to ask Steve U-House to tell us what that's about.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. On January the 4th, Owen Milligan, owner of her hurricane business, submitted an application to the city to rezon a parcel of property. The parcel of property is located at Highway 31, right when you get to the northernmost edge of the city limits, right where Old Casimir Road comes across Highway 31. That parcel of land that's right there on the right that you noticed that has been cleared. He submitted an application for that to be rezoned from RA Residential and Agricultural Property to a B3 General Business District for the purpose of locating his hurricane business there. The planning commission met and received his presentation on February the 11th. Planning commission was attended by almost all my planning commission folk and required notices were put in the newspaper. We published the notice in the newspaper. Required notices to all property owners within 300 feet of that effective parcel were sent out. We had three people come in attendance in addition to the planning commission when Mr. Milligan made his presentation. And one of them was very vocal in his support. He was a local landowner up there. He was very vocal in his support. There was another one that came that was interested in what was going on, was also supportive of the recommendation. Planning commission heard the presentation and they voted unanimously to rezon that parcel of land from RA Residential and Agricultural to B3 General Business District. We received no letters of opposition from any of the residents in that area. We had no one in opposition who attended the planning commission meeting. So it's proper procedure once the planning commission votes on something to then send a letter to you, the city council, asking that you follow their recommendation if you so see fit to rezon that parcel of land. That's where we are currently. We'd be glad to answer any questions anyone may have for me.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Call a public hearing to order. Is there anyone here that opposes the rezoning of the east side of Douglas Avenue at the intersection of Douglas Avenue and Old Casimir Road from RA Residential and Agricultural District to B3 General Business District? Is anyone here that would like to speak for this change? And none, I close the public hearing. The next item is ordinance number 210412-1.
I'm a motion to introduce ordinance 21-0412-1.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Brown, a second by Council Jennings to introduce ordinance 210412-1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Jennings.
Yes.
Council Watson.
Yes.
Council Barton.
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced.
I'd like to for immediate consideration ordinance 21-0412-1.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Brown, a second by Council Jennings to immediately consider ordinance 210412-1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Jennings.
Yes.
Council Watson.
No.
Council Barton.
Yes.
We will postpone the ordinance passage till the next meeting.
Next item on a new business is approval of the accounts payable for March 2021.
Motion to approve accounts payable for March 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Barton, a second by Council Watson to approve the accounts payable for March 2021. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Jennings.
Yes.
Council Watson.
Yes.
Council Barton.
Yes.
The accounts payable for March 2021 is approved.
Next item, I've asked Jess Nichols of the Escamie County Economic Development Authority to discuss with the council an incubator building program. And I appreciate Rick Wilson, the chairman, being here.
Thank you, Mayor. I do notice on the next item after this, you've already taken one of the steps I was recommending that you do take. I was putting together a committee to discuss this issue. What an industrial incubator business or industrial incubator is, or what a business incubator is, it just depends on what your focus needs to be, is essentially a facility that's run by either a private group or by a city or by a county that offers space for business entrepreneurs, inventors, startup businesses to sort of get their feet under them before locking them into long-term leases. It also is a way to provide business planning services to people who are wanting to start a business and have not had access to that type of information in the past. You will see these in large cities like Birmingham and Tuscaloosa. You'll also see them in small communities. Linden, Alabama, and Maringo County has had a very successful one now for going on about 20 years. Through my discussions the last couple of days with the State Department of Commerce, the piece of advice that kept coming back to me most to communicate to you is the first thing that the city needs to do is to determine what that incubator should look like. What are you trying to attract? Who are you trying to help? Because there are ongoing charges with running an incubator. It's not something that you want to go into without having a plan. Not only will you have some acquisition cost maybe unless it's a building you already own, but you also need to bring people to the table that can run it and also connect business owners with the various business services that they can find. There are grants to help pay for these things. Many different grant agencies, federal and state, will help. But that's after you get sort of a plan together. You don't want to go rushing into an incubator that's going to be solely focused on helping small professional services companies come online and then you end up with people who are doing industrial inventions and needing a place to actually do manufacturing. You know, the one in Birmingham, for instance, had a motorcycle production facility just down the hall from people who were doing business services and wellness services. So it can be a little bit of whatever you want it to be. But it is a way to help attract business into your community, attract entrepreneurs into your community. And what we find is they typically, if they come in through your incubator program, they tend to have some loyalty to the community and they tend to stay there. You don't see a lot of these where the people launch out of an incubator and then move away. But I think at this point, I may be best served taking questions from you as to if you have anything for me. Otherwise, it appears that there's going to be a maybe a committee put together to discuss this and I think that could be.
Yes, I think in our discussion, Atmore's got one, Thomasville's got one.
Right.
I think you just mentioned Greenville. Does Andalusia have one?
I did not check with Andalusia. Linden has one, but it's also that in order to help pay for that, they went into partnership with the Extension Service, Alabama Cooperative Extension. The one in Atmore is privately funded, primarily United Bank Community Development runs that one. They staff it. So they're absorbing a lot of the costs. In Thomasville, it's more industrial slash small business. There's a plumbing supply company that's been there for a number of years. So that is something that I think the community as a whole has to determine what is the Bruton incubator need to look like. And then you go out and craft that crafter incubator around what makes best sense for your community so that you spend your money wisely.
Okay. What I would like to do, I think at this point, is form a committee and the committee work with Jess and the committee needs to bring in other citizens of Bruton to be on your committee and hopefully in the next month or two months to get back with the council with their recommendations. I'd like to appoint Council Barton and Council Brown to that committee. Thank you, Jess.
One other thing I want to add, I talked to Jim Byer today about this. He was one of the people I called. He's going to call you tomorrow with some follow-up to this.
Thank you. Next item, there's some property owners who want to address the council and I'll call Steve U-House.
Mayor, we have many pieces of property throughout the city of Bruton that we're focusing upon to try to beautify the city of Bruton and enhance our neighborhoods. The state provides a procedure for us to follow in addressing these situations mainly as they relate to dilapidated structures which become nuisances in their particular neighborhood. We'll serve a notice by certified mail. That notice gives 45 days to either demolish and haul off the debris of a dilapidated structure or to rebuild it. The state also in that procedure provides every citizen with the right to address the governing body of a municipality if they want to have a tight extension, if they want council support, if they want the city's backing and understanding if they cannot meet that 45-day deadline. So we have some who have requested their right to be able to address the governing body of the city of Bruton. You see those four names that are listed up there. Ms. Lily Long, she owns a property on 1312 A and B Sowell Road. There is Mr. Henry Minius owns a property at 1135 Brandon Avenue. He's cleaned up a whole lot of the growth, the shrubs, and the bushes on the property, but neither has the money or the time to meet his deadline, which is about three days away now. So he wanted an extension. Understanding he's already accomplished a good bid on his property. And then there's Ms. Sue Beasley. I have Jason over there. Ms. Sue Beasley owns a piece of property on 0 St. Joseph's Street. That's the downtown row of buildings. The first one hit the red light and then the next one is an empty vacant spot there. There are trees growing up in it. It's been brought to my attention that those trees growing there could very well be a threat or a danger to sewer lines or storm drainage lines. So that's a matter of needing some urgent attention there to eliminate those trees and then to develop a plan for rebuilding that hole in the row of buildings down there. And then Jamella Knight, I believe there may be a Scott Knight here to speak, received a letter and a phone call from an attorney from Montgomery representing them. The property on Hamilton Street, there are two properties. It's air property and the attorney is pretty close to being able to put together an administrator for the air property. They're not going to be able to meet a deadline, they do not believe, and they're going to be asking for an extension as well. But those properties definitely need to be cleaned up and those dilapidated structures need to be removed. So that's an overview that I can give you and each one will have a right to address you and I'll turn that over to them this time.
I may call you back in a minute.
That's my idea.
Our first column is Lily Long. Just a few steps to that microphone, please.
I need to address you on. Okay. My property is 1312 Sowell Road, A and B. And if anybody has been noticing, we are working on it. We have been working on it. But what's happened is that we pay as we go. I don't want to have to owe anybody anything once I get finished with it. I don't want to have to take a loan out because my property is clear. So we have cleaned up around there. We have put a roof on there in the last month. We're working on getting doors and windows for it. So it's kind of bad. It's just, it's going to take time. And I don't have money in the bank to just go get out to do it. And I'm on a fixed income. So I have to do what I can within a month. And it's going forward. It's not, it's not falling in. And it's not growed up. It's just that it got burnt. And it's just taking me some time to get it done.
Ms. Long, how long do you think it will take you to, let's say, get the doors and windows in?
Okay, once I get the doors and windows in, all I have to do is, on one side, I have to do.
No, I mean, just, just, just trying to get the doors and the windows, not the rest of the work. Just doors and, how long do you think that would take?
Okay, it should take no more than about two months for the doors and the windows. But once I get the doors and the windows in, I'm going to have to get somebody in there to do sheetrock. And then I'm going to have to get somebody in there to do the wiring. So.
So do you think it would be reasonable if the council decided they wanted to, just say, give you a two-month extension to get the doors and the windows in and then have you come back in two months and set another time for some additional work at that point?
Yeah, that'd be reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Ms. Lily Long's property, 1312 A and B, to extend that for two months and then give her a chance to get those things. She's obviously put roofs and put money into this. Let's give her two months. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Brown, a second by Council Barton to give Ms. Lily Long's an extension of two months on this Sowell Ray property. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I got to add too, and I've been noticing where you've done a lot of work there. But going back to when we did the shopping center, we got time to do stuff. She said in two months, something might happen. She's on fixed income. Something might happen where she cannot fulfill an obligation, you know. So what do we do then? Bring her back before us again and say, okay, you ate, no.
Joe, I could answer that. You'd have to come back for the council and then we would, we would find out what happened and then make a decision then. But I think you can tell from the tone, I think the council wants to work with.
Me, probably, I think we should, I think you should give her three months.
I'm sorry, what now?
Three. Now, three months? I think you should give her three months instead of two months.
Yeah.
Basically, you put in a position, okay, you got to tell me what you're going to do. Okay, she just said she was going to fix the income. She don't have no money. She's trying to work as best as she can. Anything can happen. I think we should put her on three months and three months come back to us.
That's fine.
That's what I say.
You amend?
I would amend it to three months. I think her efforts are honest and I think we're here to work with her.
Are you good with three months?
I'm good with three months, yes.
I second.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll change the motion from Council Brown to give Ms. Lily Long three months for the windows and doors and then return back to the council.
Yes.
And a second by Ms. Barton. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Jennings.
Yes.
Council Watson.
Yes.
Council Barton.
Yes.
Then we will approve the three months deadline for her to come back to the council.
Ms. Long, if you run into situations along the way, if you'll just stay in touch with Mr. U-House, I think you'll find him more than accommodating. And then as we work forward through this, I say, you can tell we, we want to try to make sure that you get it back like you want it to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next item is Henry Minus from Brandon Avenue.
I've been a long way down in New York, working, breathing everything, trying to be awake. And I have a lot of work going on. And I'm also, you know, I'm just going to bed, but I'm still, 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 I'm still,
And I...
Miss Beasley, I think what the council is interested in, your piece of property, is a timeframe first to just cut those trees down in the brush.
We've already started on it.
You've...
Oh, yeah.
How long to just...
I just found the out of the...
Sure, sure. Would you think three months is enough time for you to...
Not to, well, I don't...
Not the building, just the trees?
Oh, yes. And something else, those hedges outside those windows or apartment doors, those hedges need to go. I went by there again today, and you can't, I mean, we're going to put glass in the windows. What did that, the weather? Do we know what busted the windows out of that building?
I do, I have no idea, no.
Anyway, oh, those hedges got to go because nobody can get close enough to do any windows, you know? I mean, we have the key to the place.
The big thing, though, right now, the first item, I think, is the trees and...
Just the trees. It's going to take a while. I mean, I inherited a monster here, and I do not know right now what I'm going to do with it. I mean, I...
But if you can deal with that, I think, in the next three months...
Jason has started on the trees. We'll do the trees.
Then, then, it's the trees. Discuss that with Mr. Uehaus, and I, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish today.
And then we'll get to the windows.
At another time, yes.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I know it's bad. I mean, I can barely look through because those hedges stick you. So can we just come on? Or we need to do trees? We'll do that.
Trees will...
Okay. I don't know how Jason gets in there. I mean, I was shocked. I mean...
So the proposal is in three, within three months, you'll get those trees cut, right?
We get the trees.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll be back, right?
Does anybody like to entertain that motion?
Yes, I'd like to give three months to Ms. Beasley to deal with the St. Joseph property, especially just the trees, and then we'll come back and we'll see where we need to go from there.
I second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Brown, a second by Councilor Jennings, to allow a three-month extension for the trees on the St. Joseph property downtown. Ms. Beasley, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
The motion is approved, and we'll go with the three-month extension.
Miss Beasley, the city understands that that's a long-term project, and so right now it was just the trees and the sewer lines, and if you'll, again, work with Mr. Uehaus, it probably not going to be a reason to come back here anytime soon, okay?
I mean, I wrote a letter.
Sure, sure.
I will, I will go do a letter. But I can help.
Yeah, and you'll find it easy to work with Mr. Uehaus on that. Next, I call Jamella Knight for the Hamilton Street two properties.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Scott Knight. I'm speaking on behalf of Jamella. The property is the estate of Cleo Knight, located on Hamilton Street. What this property is air property, and what we're in the process of doing are getting, obtaining letters of administration so that we can have the authority to act on the property. We want to address the issues that the city has sent in a letter, but we just want to act in a proper manner. So we're asking for at least six months to maybe a year's time, just on the legal aspect of getting everything in line and addressing what you have sent for us to do, get done.
Steve, when you heard, did you hear from the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Did he give you any indication when he might have something?
Mayor indicated to me that he was spared or close, about imminent, to get him to put together a person in charge so they can move forward, but he didn't give me a specific title of how close he was. He just gave me, he gave me a strong impression that he was pretty close to get him to have an administrator where they can move forward.
My thought is, and I like Cleo Knight a lot.
I didn't hear you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
My thought is if we sort of did it towards, we'd like to, maybe I would, maybe to get back within three months with Mr. Uehaus.
Yes, sir.
And give him authority to go up to six months to deal with the attorney.
Yes, sir.
Would that, would that be workable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody like to make that motion?
I'm going to make a motion for, for the Knight family for up to three months, possibly with Mr. Uehaus. That might be extended up to six, and we know that that could occur because of the lawyer that you've already contacted and to give them that amount of time.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilor Brown, with a second by Councilor Watson, to approve a three-month extension to return back with Mr. Uehaus on the Hamilton Street properties. Is there any further discussion?
Put it also, make it a motion that Mr. Uehaus can go to six months if necessary.
It may need it.
Correct. And in the motion, Mr. Uehaus could extend to six months.
To six months.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and the approval for the extension for the Hamilton Street properties is granted.
Appreciate you coming today. Next item, Mr. Approve an ordinance to declare the city property a surplus and approve a building lease with Amanda Quick Shavers. That's ordinance number 21-0412-2.
Motion to introduce ordinance 21-0412-2.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Barton, a second by Councilor Brown, to introduce ordinance Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
The motion to introduce ordinance 210412-2 is approved.
Motion to immediate consideration for ordinance 21-0412-2.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Brown, a second by Councilor Barton, to immediately introduce ordinance 210412-2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
No.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
We will hold this ordinance to the next meeting.
Next item is to approve an ordinance to declare city property a surplus located at 1006 Douglas Avenue. That's ordinance number 21-0412-3.
Motion to introduce ordinance 21-0412-3.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Brown, a second by Councilor Barton, to introduce ordinance 210412-3. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Ordinance 210412-3 has been introduced. Now we need to, a motion on immediate consideration.
Motion for immediate consideration for 20, no, we're done.
We haven't done, have we done immediate consideration?
No, we have not.
We need to immediately consider ordinance 210412-3. We just introduced that one.
For immediate consideration, 20-0412-3 then.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Brown, a second by Councilor Barton, to immediately introduce ordinance 210412-3. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
No.
Councilor Watson?
No.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
We will hold that ordinance to the next meeting.
Next item is to approve declaration of surplus vehicles. There's a resolution number 21-0412. Could you read those out? I can see them for you.
I can. It's a 2000 A in Chevrolet Colorado, a 2004 Ford F-50, a 1995 Ford F-150, a 2008 Chevrolet
Motion to approve resolution 21-0412-4.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Barton, a second by Councilor Watson, to approve resolution Is there any discussion?
Where do these vehicles, with the property come out of?
Public works.
Public work?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
When they, when they go into surplus, what does that mean?
We actually, in this resolution, state that we'll sell them, and that's our, our plan, and we sell them on a GovDeals website so that it follows state law. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Resolution 210412-4 to declare surplus vehicles is approved.
Next item is to approve a contract with janitorial services provided for city properties. It's resolution 21-0412. Let's call the city clerk.
We actually have someone performing janitorial services, but were, decided not to renew their insurance required by the city. I think they really just got too busy. So we requested people to submit proposals to us. The lowest proposal was all over janitorial services. We have a reference also from Coastal Community College. They do the cleaning there, but they had the lowest bid. So, but I've listed all three. The second bid, lowest bid was Jan, Janitorial, and the third was Celeste Cleaning Services.
Now, the motion we make, well, actually the resolution, but ultimately award the bid to...
All over, I'm sorry, I mean, all over janitorial services.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Watson, a second by Councilor Brown, to approve resolution Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Jennings?
Yes.
Councilor Watson?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Resolution 210412-5 to approve a contract with all over janitorial services is approved.
I'd like to read a proclamation. In recognition of National Minority Health Month in the city of Bruton, whereas the economic welfare and general health of the city, citizens of Bruton, is largely dependent on access to quality health care, and whereas everyone in the city of Bruton benefits when the general population is healthy and productive, and whereas April is established as National Minority Health Month by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and whereas federal statistics show a disproportionate impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on racial and ethnic minorities and demonstrate the need for these valuable communities to get vaccinated, and whereas vaccination is the best way to return our community to normal operations. Now therefore, the mayor does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Minority Health Month and encourage all citizens to be vaccinated, proclaim this 12th day of April 2021. With that, the meeting is adjourned.